Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Oshkosh Area District School Board of Education Regular Board Meeting, Wednesday, April 26, 2023. In compliance with open meeting law notification, this meeting has been publicly noticed. I will call the roll for this meeting. Carolyn?
Here.
DeWitt?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Carnes?
Here.
Solaji?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Wyman? Here. We have a quorum. Now, we'd like to welcome students from Merrill Elementary to lead the Pledge of Allegiance with us. Tonight, we have with us our Gus Schultz, Rachel Ragath, Dexter Engelmann, Amberly Hiller, and Autumn Brister. And we have a little something for you to see. Thank you so much. That's very nice. Dexter?
My gift. Oh, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Rachel? Gus? And Amberly?
Thank you.
Autumn?
Autumn.
Autumn's not here. Thank you so much. It's our students that make this history so special. You did a very nice job tonight. Thank you so much. And we'd like to invite Jennifer Summers, Principal of Merrill Elementary School, to the table to share events that are happening at the school this year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to see all of you. Some of you have been over to visit this year, and it's good to see you again. So I'm here to talk to you about some great things that are going on at Merrill Elementary this year. Our huge focus, obviously, in the district has been literacy, and so that's what I'm going to talk to you about tonight, is we have been implementing many exciting things at our school this year to really help boost our literacy data and get our kids growing. One of the really big things we did, in addition to just the fabulous literacy resources that we now have in our teachers' hands, is we started piloting a program. It's an intervention reading program called RISE, and it is meant to take up students who are below reading level and really help boost them quickly closer towards that grade level benchmark. And so we implemented that actually as a school-wide intervention because of the high number of students we need to get up to grade level for literacy. And so we started our school year out with this intervention, and what it is, is it's all based on small groups. And so our entire school was split into groups by grade level, and every day, these students met and had multiple staff members from the building. It was our literacy ISTs, our classroom teachers, our special ed teachers, our speech teachers, our English language learning teachers. Everybody was collaborating together and working with small groups of students. And not only did it help us work in small groups on literacy, but it also really gave us a great upper hand at the beginning of the year with just developing school families and classroom families and giving students that extra one-on-one attention because we had so many adults in the classroom for an hour a day, where they were able to pick up on routines and those procedures and really get the idea for school, especially at the kindergarten and first grade level. And so that was really exciting to see roll out. When we got to the middle of the year, our team reviewed everything and looked at how we might want to restructure it and review. And the second half of the year, we've been focused on a less number of students. It's not the entire student body anymore. It's about 25%. Our lowest 25% in each grade level that are still receiving that intervention while other students are receiving that small group instruction within their own classroom. And so we've been collaborating with our teams every other week, looking at data, really looking at students, and are they moving? Are they not moving? Why? Why not? And then planning and moving forward based on what we're learning about our students. And so we're getting to the end of the year, so we'll be reviewing and revising for fall. And so that's been super exciting. It's been a huge endeavor, and I can't thank my ISTs enough for the work and effort they have put in this year because it's been a lot, but it's been wonderful. A couple other things real quick that we've been doing as well for literacy, something really unique that we have partnered with UWO Oshkosh, with Professor Hohns that works for UWO. He has college students that come after school twice a week, and they work with about a dozen of our lighted schoolhouse students that are there, and they receive additional reading tutoring at night. And it's really been a positive experience. Our students are getting to work with a college student and connect with them. They're a little younger and can have, you know, more informal conversations, and it's been a wonderful connection, and Dr. Hohns is excited to continue with that next year with us. And so we're very happy for that partnership. And another literacy intervention we have going on is something called ABC Helpers. It's something that's part of Jan Richardson's work. We use a lot of Jan Richardson resources in our school district for literacy, and what this is, is for our students in mostly K-1, kindergarten and first grade, that are having trouble forming their letters and naming letters, and we really need them to be solid in that. And so it's a foundation to being able to read. And so we have our fourth and fifth grade students. Some of them are sitting behind me right now that are buddies with our younger students, and they meet with them every day. They come down for about three, four minutes, and it's a really quick intervention, but they sit with the student and they have them trace the letters, upper and lowercase. And as they're having the student trace it, they have to say the letter, A, AA, BBB. And it's very simple and repetitive, but it has wonderful results. And our students are very quickly growing in the number of letters that they can say and recognize. And so it's another great tool where our kids are buddying up and being leaders and really helping us build on that school family. So lots of really good literacy things going on, and also just bringing our school together as a family. Do you guys have any questions at all?
Thank you, Jen. It sounds like you're doing wonderful things at Merrill.
Thank you. It was a pleasure to come in and talk with you.
Thank you. At this time, I invite Sabrina Johnson, Executive Director of Human Resources, to come forward to introduce this year's Employees of the Year recipients.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. If I could please ask Jennifer Gerke to join me at the table. Please join me in recognizing Jennifer Gerke, a literacy resource teacher at Oakwood Elementary School, as a 2023 Elementary Teacher of the Year. Jennifer is a positive, caring member of the Oakwood School community. She always puts students first and believes in the power and capability of teachers. As a literacy resource teacher, Jennifer has a deep understanding of literacy instruction. She has an incredible ability to coach and share the knowledge with teachers, and she is able to create, plan, and implement individual plans for students that need additional support. Jennifer has been an instructional coach for many years. She is passionate about learning and sharing her knowledge with those around her. One of her superpowers is her ability to observe in the classroom and instinctively knows what the students' needs are and how the teacher can accomplish it. She effectively implements coaching cycles that have impacted teaching and improved student learning. This work is always centered around students and data. In addition to doing that at Oakwood, she is a leader in the district. She believes professional development teachers during in-service days as well as hosting new teacher training. Jennifer also has an incredible ability to sit down with a student, and after working with them for a short amount of time, she can create an individualized plan that closes the achievement gap for them. She not only personally delivers that intense instruction, but also creates plans that teachers can implement. She then monitors and adjusts those plans as needed to ensure student success. Oakwood and our district are fortunate to have Jennifer's expertise and passion as she makes a difference in the lives of our students. Help me in. Thank you. Next, if I could ask Amy Beal to join me at the table. Please join me in recognizing Amy Beal, literacy resource teacher at Roosevelt Elementary School, as a 2023 Elementary Teacher of the Year. Amy is the pinnacle of support literacy at Roosevelt Elementary. She is a true leader in her role at Roosevelt, as well as a district-wide providing countless opportunities to new teachers and veteran teachers alike. Amy works tirelessly at Roosevelt to make sure each student is getting what they need. She constantly seeks new ways to impact student learning. She recently started a tutoring program through... Littera? Littera. Littera, thank you. As well as another program for after-school tutoring with students from UWO Oshkosh. These tutoring programs not only provide Roosevelt students with extra support and tutoring, but benefit our pipeline of educators giving UWO Oshkosh students critical tutoring and teaching experiences. Amy has also organized a whole kindergarten tutoring system where fourth and fifth grade students volunteer to come in daily and read a letter book to help our youngest learners with letter and sound identification. Even during the summer months, Amy spends time collecting, examining, and organizing, building data in order to come back to school in September, ready to implement the necessary interventions, curriculum, and support. One of Amy's colleagues explained that her monthly meetings with Amy has been instrumental in supporting her literacy needs of her students. Being able to know what kids need, how to get them there, and any additional support to provide after implementation has been transformational, my apologies, for the teacher in the class. Amy's calm demeanor and warm heart have the ability to make everyone feel like family. It is hard to put Amy's impact at Roosevelt in the district into words. However, as she approaches her retirement at the end of the school year, it is clear to see that her impact will be felt for years, if not generations to come. The love and dedication that she poured into her work and the students and families she's impacted throughout her career is simply amazing. Thank you. If I could please ask Melissa Larson to join me at the table. Please join me in recognizing Melissa Larson, physical education teacher at South Park Middle School, as a 2023 Secondary Teacher of the Year. Within the South Park family, Melissa is known to be someone you can lean on for help in the classroom, stepping up for student school events, and of course, all things athletics. She is a stellar adaptive physical education teacher and goes above and beyond to make sure her students feel included and are getting all they can out of their physical education experience. Melissa can quickly adapt and modify almost any activity to ensure all students are included and feel safe and welcome in the classroom. Many of her students struggle to make connections or even participate in learning activities, but they thrive in the environment she creates for them in the classroom. Not only does Melissa excel as an adaptive physical education teacher, but she also makes deep connections to her students in the regular education classroom. Students in her classes are held to high expectations, and you can see the mutual respect within her classroom. Along with this excelling in the classroom, Melissa coaches volleyball, girls and boys' basketball, track, and the girls' go-forward at South Park. She is passionate about giving all students, no matter their ability, a connection to athletics and being part of a team. She enjoys getting to know her students outside of the classroom and believes extracurricular involvement encourages students to do well within the classroom as well. Melissa has served on the district's partners and health team and is always looking to help others meet their health and wellness needs. Ooh, these words. Slow down. By being a supportive and knowledgeable colleague, she has partnered with community organizations and businesses to receive hygiene products and classroom equipment to benefit students in her classes, as well as successfully completed a grant and advocated to receive heart rate monitors for the physical education classes in South Park. She is a leader within her department and has mentored several individuals through their physical education teaching journey as new employees have come into the district. Melissa is always willing to help out others and volunteer within her school building. She is an outstanding colleague and reliable veteran educator in the South Park family. Thank you. Next, if I could ask Justin Habel to join me at the table. Please join me in recognizing Justin Habel, Spanish teacher at Oshkosh West High School, as the 2023 Secondary Teacher of the Year. Justin is best characterized as a servant leader, spending countless hours improving the lives of coworkers and students. Everything Justin does is for others, and his commitment to doing what is best for the greatest good is incredible. For example, as a department head for both high schools, Justin chose to take a traveling position this year despite his veteran status. He did this because he knew that those he is responsible for leading did not want to take on this role. This level of selflessness is rare, but that is who he is, and if you ask Justin, he simply describes it as an opportunity to be part of both teams. Justin's servant leadership is exemplified by leading committees and staff development. He makes Teacher Appreciation Week a full-scale event to honor coworkers, involving local businesses, games between staff, and connecting hundreds of personal student notes to recognize teachers' efforts. Justin also led a book group for Lost at School to help educate coworkers about West's Equity Initiative to close achievement gaps and change attitudes towards students who most need it at school. He continued this leadership and growth among staff by leading a book group for Evicted this year as well. Justin also works to build leadership capacities within students. He is an advisor for West is Best, which is the student group that leads within the school through positive peer mentorship. Justin also leads life-changing study abroad trips for students and acts as a leader for the Global Academy Program. Justin is seen at many extracurriculars, helping to livestream events, and is frequently recognized by his students themselves, as he is often nominated as Most Influential Teacher by Students. The selfless care and attention Justin puts into his work has a daily positive impact on the staff and students at West High School. In addition to everything mentioned, Justin is a distinguished educator in his own right. His classroom is a place of innovation, creativity, acceptance, and accountability. Without a doubt, Justin is most deserving of this honor. Thanks, Justin. Next, if I could please ask Tara Koji to join me at the table. Please join me in recognizing Tara as an ESOL Assistant at Oshkosh North High School as a 2023 Support Staff Employee of the Year. Tara is an invaluable asset to her students, colleagues, and our entire community. She works tirelessly to support English speakers of other languages and students of refugee background at North High School and beyond, working directly with students as well as supporting entire families and communities. At Oshkosh North, Tara has created a welcoming and inclusive environment for all of her students. She is committed to getting to know her students and listening to them so that she can provide them with the support they need to succeed. She is extremely patient, empathetic, and always willing to go the extra mile. And when she talks about her students, it's clear that she embraces them as her own children. The advocacy and love she provides is incredible. Tara is often the critical link that not only connects students to school but keeps them at school, engaged in their education and building their future here in the United States. At Oshkosh North, Tara is known to be a trusted adult who will fight for our students of refugee background, and our students know this. They recognize this and appreciate it. At times when students are new to the country and new to Oshkosh North, she is the only adult that some of them feel comfortable being themselves with. Again, Tara's ability to connect with and support her students is remarkable. At the district level, Tara constantly goes above and beyond to support her ESOL program. She is a value translator, connector, and advocate. The perspective and passion she brings to our work as an educational institution committed to supporting all of our community's children is impactful and very beautiful. Perhaps most importantly, Tara is connected to our community in ways that many educators and school staff can only dream of. She embodies our district's motto of "Building Community Through Education," and because of her, our students and families of refugee background are connected, seen, and valued. Next, if I could ask Donnie Cobundy to join me at the table. Please join me in recognizing Donnie Cobundy, a custodian at Oaklawn Elementary, as the 2023 Support Staff Employee of the Year. Donnie, or Mr. Donnie, as students call him, is an outstanding member of the Oaklawn Community family. As a custodian, Donnie is responsible for maintaining a clean and safe environment for all students and staff. However, his impact is far deeper. Donnie first came to Oaklawn in a temporary position. When he was given the job as head custodian, the entire staff and community were thrilled. Donnie works tirelessly behind the scenes to keep classrooms, hallways, and common areas in pristine condition. He is always willing to lend a helping hand to teachers and staff, whether it's helping to set up for an event or assisting with a classroom project. His friendly demeanor and willingness to go above and beyond his duties create a positive and welcoming environment for everyone who enters the school. Donnie is also an incredible problem solver who is constantly embracing opportunities for improvement and seeking feedback to make Oaklawn, Oaklawn, an even better place. From listening to staff suggestions to answering questions from curious students, Donnie always makes time for people around him. He is a big part of Oaklawn's school community and understands the importance of making connections. Whenever you see Donnie during the school day, your day is going to be brighter. Donnie's commitment to the Oaklawn School community is truly admirable and deserves recognition. He is an integral part of the school community and his hard work and dedication do not go unnoticed. And next, if I could ask Jacob Bookner to join me at the table. Please join me in recognizing Jacob, a first-grade teacher at Reed Elementary School, as the 2023 First Year Teacher of the Year. Starting a new career in any field can be challenging, and the teaching profession is no exception. As a first-year educator, Jake has shown exceptional dedication, hard work, and passion. He has had an incredible impact on the Reed School Elementary community, and we are so excited to see him continue to positively impact the lives of students. Jake has worked tirelessly to create engaging and inclusive lesson plans that challenge and inspire his students. His dedication to his student's success is evident in the time and effort he puts into his work. As a first-year educator, Jake has a humble confidence that is both admirable and approachable. He is willing to try new things and fail forward, and his natural passion for teaching is obvious through his interactions with students and colleagues. Jake has been a strong addition to the first-grade team at Reed, as well as the entire school community. He genuinely seeks to understand the curriculum through questioning, reflection, and modification when welcoming suggestions to his implementation. He respects the traditions of his team but does not hesitate to add fresh ideas to make student learning more captivating. Jake also embraces the diverse population of Reed Elementary and is quick to find strengths within all students. He has built a classroom culture of respect for differences and understands that kids need different things in order to be successful. Jake is constantly brainstorming best practices and collaborating with others to meet the needs of his diverse learners. Jake also connects with students across levels in the hallway through simple acknowledgements such as a fist bump, a smile, or a high five. He is quick to notice positivity and make a comment that brings a smile. In addition, his sense of humor and enthusiasm for learning is second to none and is infectious to anyone around him. In his first year of teaching, Jake has demonstrated exceptional skills, dedication, and a passion for his work that sets him apart from his peers. His contributions to Reed Elementary have not gone unnoticed, and he is a true inspiration to us all. And last, but certainly not least, if I can add Brad, ask Brad Jedarski to join me at the table. Please join me in recognizing Brad Jedarski, Activities Director at Oshkosh West High School, as the 2023 Administrator of the Year. Integrity, servant leadership, unwavering commitment, work ethic, and school spirit, these are the qualities that come to mind when describing Brad and his impact at West High School. Brad is a person of integrity. He consistently applies policies and follows procedures in order to be fair and do the right thing. When a situation arises that is not black and white, Brad takes his time to fully investigate, think through, and discuss all potential solutions, and then make his decision based on what he truly believes is best and fair. A few years ago, Brad helped to lead a process to develop Oshkosh West Athletic Department Vision and Core Values. This has resulted in a culture change within West Athletics, and Brad exemplifies the core values in all that he does. Brad is the epitome of servant leadership. No matter how busy he is, Brad will always drop what he is doing to help others. When incidents occur, Brad shows up in a big way to help whatever way he can. A true servant leader is willing to roll up his sleeves and do the hard work. Brad does this all the time. For example, he has given up countless hours of his own personal time to paint areas of the school. This is certainly not his job, but he will do whatever it takes to make West the best facility for our students. Brad's work ethic and his commitment to West and the Oshkosh Area School District are second to none. For many years, Brad has worked tirelessly to upgrade facilities, getting creative about how to save pennies or partner on projects with others for funding. how to save pennies, or partner on projects with others for funding. His commitment is always also exemplified in his drive to ensure that all of his details required to run sports and activities are attended to. And of course, anyone who knows Brad or even just sees him at West knows that sitting still or standing around are not options. He is constantly on the move attending to every detail to make experience for players and fans a positive one. Lastly, Brad is filled with school spirit. He gets so excited when students get a win and feels for them when they don't. Brad deeply cares about the Oshkosh West School community and district and is truly our biggest fan.
Before we continue with our land acknowledgement, we have one individually considered resolution to vote upon. Resolution number eight: Be it resolved that Eileen Fitzpatrick be assigned to the position of Secretary Deputy Clerk to the Board as filed with the President to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Herzog.
Aye.
DeWitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Have a nice night.
Great work.
All right, Dr. Davis, if you could read the land acknowledgement, please.
Yes, as we gather today, we'd like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral lands of the Ho-Chunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived on the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its border. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you very much. Now, approval of agenda, is there anyone that would like to change the order of items on the agenda? Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I would like to see Resolution 11 moved to an individually considered resolution, please.
Any other changes?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to Board Administrative Reports. Board President's Report.
Point of order?
Yes.
For the agenda with the changing of resolution to an individually considered, I'll still need a first and a second.
Okay.
And then a vote.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
It is appropriate to have a motion and a second. It's also appropriate if we just would do that by acclamation. Either way is workable according to the WASB attorney.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
President's Report. I would just like to say that I am honored to lead this board. I am very proud to be part of this board. This board, in the past two years that I've been on it, has made some very thoughtful decisions, and I know that we will continue to doing that, always with putting students first. I'd like to welcome Kelly DeWitt to our board and congratulate Dr. Herzog on winning the election. So we are a complete board again. We've had some great discussion. We haven't always agreed, but we've always voted, and after the vote is done, we live with that vote and we move forward. And I think that's one thing that's been very good, is moving forward without any dissension. It was also brought up during the election about open meeting laws and maybe the lack of the public's understanding of open meeting laws. Many times, we have public come and they say there are three minutes and we don't engage. That is due to legal open meeting laws, so we want the public to know that. It's not that we don't care, it's not that we don't want you to come, but legally, we cannot be having a conversation with you. And why we don't just pop up with items at the end of the meeting, it's another open meeting law item, that all of our meetings have to be noticed and the items that we speak about need to be on the agenda. So I just wanted to talk to the public about that and explain that a little bit. I'm very excited. We're going to have a great year. We've got a lot of topics to handle, and we will move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, we have retirements. Thank you. We have three retirements today. First one is Timothy Foy. He's a physical education teacher at Oakwood Elementary, and he's been with the district since 1995. Michelle Hurkey, an EBD teacher at Perry Tipler, has been with the district since 2002. And Kim Zach Hoffman, I don't know what an S.P.E.D. vocabulary is.
Special Ed.
Ah, Special Ed Research Para-Professional from Oshkosh North High School and been with us since 2013. I'd like to thank all three of these individuals for the countless hours that they have put in and wish them well in their retirement and whatever they choose to do. Anyone have anything? Yes?
So two of those, Tim Foy, I've known for a long time through athletics, been a gym teacher for one of my kids as well, so he will be missed. And then, Michelle Hurkey is a big advocate for teachers and students through OEA and has a big part to play in that, and so just want to give her a shout out for all of her hard work that she's done for the district over the years.
That's great. Thank you very much.
I also was going to say, just a note about Mr. Foy. I know that this year and his last year, he's taken on several student teachers and really been training up the future physical education teachers at the elementary school level, and that's been really admirable and appreciated.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Third, I guess, everything that Table just said. My kids had Mr. Foy as well and really enjoyed him, and yeah, he's really good at his job. So I want to thank him for the time that he's put in at Oakwood.
Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I've had the opportunity to work with both Tim and Shelley, and these are two educators among many in our system who put students first, and they will be missed for the positive impact they've had on students, current and past, and into the future because of the tone they set and the culture they help provide in their schools. So, thank you to all three retirees.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the last item of my President's Report is to, again, thank all of the award recipients that we saw this evening. We have some very, very special teachers, staff in our district. As Dr. Herzog says, we have the best staff in the entire Fox Valley, not the state of Wisconsin. So again, congratulations to all of our recipients and to all of our teachers, and not just the teachers, but the families of the teachers that understand the countless hours that are put in, and sometimes these are after hours. And many times, we don't know about those hours and are not able to appreciate all those hours, so thank you to every employee of the Oshkosh Area School District and the families. Thank you. Moving on, Superintendent's Report.
All right. So, starting with, we've got a busy time at the end of the year. So, our community's program at Oshkosh North is once again hoping to host the annual Bike Ash event. Bike Ash is happening on Saturday, May 13th, and it aims to promote awareness around biking and bike safety. We appreciate the students' involvement in this community event, so looking forward to that. Some eighth graders at Carl Treger Elementary are spending their recess reading with kindergartners and first graders. One student, Hanako Wurtanen Grine, has really embraced the opportunity and recently spent time teaching kindergartners about her experience showing horses. She read a book about horses, created and shared a slideshow teaching key vocabulary to students, and then did a craft teaching them how to braid with yarn like you might braid a horse's tail. So congratulations on that awesome job and going above and beyond. Oshkosh West is thrilled to announce that its school newspaper, The Index, has won the Blue Ribbon at the Northeastern Wisconsin Scholastic Press Association Conference once again. Congratulations to the talented student journalists and editors who continue to produce exceptional work. Their dedication to hard work has paid off, and we are so proud of them. Also want to recognize the educators that are behind supporting the students and encouraging their work. So, great job, everyone at the West Index. Second graders at Franklin Elementary recently enjoyed reading with Sergeant Ansel from the Oshkosh Police Department. After he spoke with students about being a police officer, he read them a book, and the students were able to select a Reach a Child book to keep. We love that excitement and the smiles during the visits and appreciate the impactful partnership with OPD. Our Girls Who Code Club at Oakwood Elementary wrapped up its 12-week program with a special celebration of learning. Parents, siblings, grandparents, and teachers were special guests as third through fifth grade club members shared their hard work. What an amazing group of girls and supportive adults. Congratulations to everyone involved in that. Also wanted to let the community know, a week from today, we will host our first of two farewell tours for Webster Stanley School, the Webster Stanley School Building. All are invited to join us and take a walk down memory lane. Two tour dates will be available, Wednesday, May 3rd, so a week from today, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and on Sunday, May 7th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Visitors are invited to take a self-guided tour of the school that will close at the end of this school year. And a reminder that we continue to share our COVID-19 plan for 2223 school year that can be found on our website. And then finally, just a list of some busy times out in the school and the community. So again, we continue to thank everyone for being so gracious and showing me around and continuing to be visible in the community. So that concludes the Superintendent's Report for tonight.
Thank you very much. District Supplemental Reports. First up is Dr. Gunlock, and this is a report from the Board Listening Session of April 12th.
Good evening, everybody. We had three individuals address the Listening Session on the 12th. The first two individuals spoke about a similar topic regarding bus transportation. As you may know, our students get to ride the city bus for free. There have been some incidents on the city bus, and they're wondering if there was anything that we could do to increase the quantity of students who are using the mobile app that we've put together with the city, and we talked about brainstorming some ideas about that. One of the issues we have is that there is no Wi-Fi on those buses, and while the app doesn't always require Wi-Fi, sometimes to get into it, it does. So that's just part of the issue there. So two people spoke about that. The third person discussed, came to discuss our reading program, wondering if there was anything that necessarily kept the district from purely implementing a Science of Reading program, and also talked a little bit about third graders taking the forward exam and the fact that it's very much about students being comfortable using the computer and able to perform on that exam. And those were the three people who spoke.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next up, we'd like to hear from Ms. Conrad in regards to Partners at Learning.
All right. This school year, Julie Conrad, Director of Critical Assessment, this school year, we have been partnering and reworking with the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce Partners at Learning. And as you can see from the staff report, we're ready to unveil that we've rebranded from, and that's a suggestion from the Board at the Education Committee meeting, we have rebranded Partners at Learning to Adopt a School. So we have spent this year reworking roles, responsibilities, and really clarifying what Adopt a School means and what a partnership means between a business, a community-based organization, and that particular school community. We surveyed principals and other school leaders that have really strong partnerships to find out what they were looking for, and then we looked at other organizations across the state that have high quality or have had success in Adopt a School or partners with business programming. So in your packet in the staff report, you can see the pieces that were presented to our building administrators just this past, actually just a few weeks ago, presented to that. We are making revisions based on their feedback, and our plan is to have every school partnered by the time school starts this coming school year in partnership with the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce. Also keeping in mind that we have some very longstanding partnerships at Roosevelt Elementary School and at Merrill Elementary School, and the plan is to absolutely keep those partners on board through Adopt a School. So through all of this, our school communities were very appreciative of getting their feedback on this, and we are hoping that our business community will be able to better match and plug in with our schools in the ways that work for them. Also, in addition to that, a new partner that we brought on board with us is Teresa Duran in our Oshkosh Area School District Education Foundation to also help manage this as well. So we're proud of our partnership and hoping that this provided the information the Board was looking for.
Just for the public, can you tell us the main benefit of having this program between businesses and the schools?
Absolutely. So we know that schools and building up strong school communities is a big reason that individuals, businesses move to the Oshkosh community. And so having strong schools builds economic development, and feeding economic development builds strong schools. So with that, when businesses are embedded in our schools, there's benefits such as being able to see what their families or employees, what that looks like for their children at school, being able to support our future workforce and our future community members within there. And also, when businesses give back to schools, we know that for a lot of our employees, having that spirit of giving or that spirit of volunteerism really adds to building community within the workplace. So both of those pieces benefit our schools.
Any other comments, questions? Mrs. Carolyn.
Are you also working with GoEDC?
Absolutely. GoEDC, the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Council, they in particular have been partnering with us more in the workforce development piece of that. And what I mean by that is they have key areas that they have gotten grants for, that they are partnering and working with us, and they're helping us with youth apprenticeship placements and also finding other organizations to be able to feed into our youth apprenticeship and workforce development. Just recently, they were working with us on the childcare grant that they got in developing and strengthening the childcare pieces and working with us as far as how are we helping and feeding the pipeline into childcare and our childcare assistant teacher training program in partnership with Fox Valley Technical College.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
I'm thrilled to see the progress that we're making, you know, connecting businesses and those entities to the Oshkosh Area School District. Those relationships are, you know, so important, and it's, you know, such a good thing to see the work that you guys are doing to strengthen those relationships and ties. So I just wanted to say thank you for kind of the rebrand, redo, you know? I think it's a positive thing. So, thanks.
Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I really like seeing the roles and responsibilities. I think that's really critical. I'm not sure when the last time those were shared out, but I think it's always important to review roles and responsibilities to make sure that everybody's staying sure that everybody's staying in their lane, and we know what the expectations are. And to me, this also promotes a goal we've had relative to community engagement, and we know that strong schools lead to strong economic growth in the community. So, to me, these are all positive moves. Thank you for your work.
Anyone else? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, now we have other reports, committee chairs, or someone reporting for the chair. First up is Facilities and Finance. Facilities and Finance met on Thursday, April 20th. We had a very good meeting. The first topic that we talked about was funding for the music, career, and tech programs, and the district is in process right now of standardizing equipment at each school, as well as working on having equity of equipment available for all students. And we maybe, well, Mr. Meehan House is looking at buying some of these items in bulk to reduce the price and to benefit the school district. And this has to do, in the music department, the fine art department, the consumer education department. So, we're very excited that we will be on a rotating schedule, so we will not find ourselves in an area where we have older equipment than we should have. Okay. We had an update on the cleaning service. There's an RFP out. Bids were received, and they are currently under review. We had a discussion about the North Side Elementary School boundaries, and we're currently looking at the safety of walking to school versus busing, and all of these have to do with safety routes and looking at school boundaries. Cobason is reviewing the possibility of pickup and drop-offs at specific locations instead of house-to-house. There may be some specific pickup, drop-off points in each area. We looked at a new food service position. Because of Belle Phillips having a production kitchen, which is very exciting, there's a need for a kitchen supervisor, and that will begin the year, next school year, '23, '24. We also talked about a budget update. You'll be hearing more about the budget. And with the ESAR funding coming to the end, Mr. Nehans reported that the OASD will be reviewing upcoming budgets to ensure that we can function within the budgetary guidelines without the aid of ESAR funds. Our next meeting is Thursday, May 18th, at 7:30. Okay. Next up, Legislative Committee.
Yes, thank you. Legislative Committee met on Tuesday, April 18th, at 3:15 in Dr. Davis's office. Dr. Davis provided a copy of the handout showing our six-year history of our total budget, healthcare costs, enrollment numbers, revenue limits, authority, and salary increases for the Oshkosh Area School District. This information was provided to area legislators, and also, Dr. Herzog and I presented this data at a CISA 6 legislative breakfast earlier that, in that time frame. I just want to go off-script and say that Dr. Davis did a great job preparing the data for that breakfast, and it was much appreciated. And then we talked about some of the legislators that we had talked with during the breakfast and kind of gave a debrief on what we're hearing from our legislators regarding the school district and the things that we have going on. We also received an update from Dr. Herzog on the Day at the Capitol event hosted by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, also known as WASB. Barb walked us through what went on during the Capitol and shared with us some of the learnings that she had. We also discussed scheduling our legislator meetings in May. It seems like the K-12 portion of the budget will be the last part of the budget to be reviewed, so we thought it made sense for us to connect with our legislators sometime in May. So, I think we will be doing that next meeting and also working with Dr. Davis and Sherry to schedule those appointments. We have some new committee members. This will be my last report as chair of Legislative Committee. I'm happy to pass it off to Dr. Herzog. I believe we will be meeting on Tuesday, May 23rd, and we do not have any agenda items currently because we knew there would be a new committee. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Policy and Governance?
The Policy and Governance Committee met on April 4th, but I just wanted to say, I had a great time chairing this committee this past year. I think we got a lot of productive things done. We had a lot of really good conversations on complex issues, and I think we put a lot of things in policy that'll help the school district move forward for, you know, a long period of time. But April 4th was another interesting meeting. We reviewed 12 policies that contain technical and minor updates recommended by NEOLA. These types of policies, types of updates happen periodically to make minor corrections or clarifications to policy, not really changing the meaning of policy. All 12 of the policies reviewed were recommended to the board for approval at tonight's meeting and are part of the packet. Two additional policies were reviewed and will be returning for further discussion at the May 23 meeting. These two policies were Policy 5451.01, Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship. Basically, we have some really smart kids in our school district, and when they get all straight A's, or when they get straight A's and they ace all the other testing, we have to come up with more criteria to justify who gets a full scholarship. So, we had a real robust discussion about that, because these are excellent kids that are getting perfect scores in almost everything and all the tiebreakers, and we want to make sure that we can put a few more qualifications in place so that, you know, maybe there's some differentiation on who gets the full scholarship or not. So, we're still in discussion about that, and that'll be coming back to the board, or to committee and then to the board. Then we talked about head lice. That was a lengthy, interesting discussion that we tabled because we want to make sure that we do the right thing policy-wise as far as, you know, when kids should or shouldn't go back to class so that as few kids in the OASD as possible get head lice. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is the non-agenda-related public forum.
And you can just, I would say, read that.
Okay. A total of 45 minutes during this meeting will be allotted for non-agenda and agenda-related public forum. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. Our first speaker this evening is Gregory Egner. And if you could state your address, please. Name and address.
Thank you. Gregory Egner, 911 Greenwood Court. I want to compliment the Oshkosh North Girl Softball JV team for taking care of me last Thursday. I was umpiring the game, and I was unable to continue, and the coaches and the players made sure that I was taken care of. And normally, as an umpire, I take care of the players, but this day it's this complete role reversal, and it was great. You know, do you need water? Do you need, you know, whatever you need, we'll be more than happy to give it to you. And then when my ride came, you know, one of the players escorted me, and then one of the parents did after that, took over and escorted me to my ride afterwards. So, it was really terrific sportsmanship by North, and I would like to commend them publicly for taking care of me and a job well done. So, kudos to the coaching staff at North and the junior varsity softball players. It was a pleasure to be there, even though I couldn't continue. It was a really distinct pleasure to be there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glad you're able to be here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for umpiring.
Yes.
That's a tough gig.
Forty-six years now.
I got a lot of you sporting this. That's a tough gig.
It is. Forty-six years I've been doing it. So, awesome. Thank you.
Next speaker, Matt Took.
All right. Hey, everybody. I'm Matt Took. I live at 1679 Thornton Drive. I've got a question for everybody listening. What would you call it when adults provide materials to children that's meant to excite sexual curiosity? So, that's a question that I have. Something that I wanted to bring forth to the board. I was tipped off to problems in books at the Oshkosh Area School District Libraries. Last year, I was actually given a copy of a book called All American Boys, and little did I know, this was one of the least troublesome. But I read through this book, and it was full of vulgarity. And so, I called the teacher. I was very surprised, and I asked the question, you know, when I was in high school 25 years ago, we would have never had vulgar materials in our libraries or in our books. And I asked that teacher, who was about my age, "In your professional opinion, when did you start to see this?" And I was told about 10 or 15 years ago. And so, something has changed, and I don't think people know about it. And I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention because I know the board is interested as well, and obviously, administration would want to know. I brought a book to, before this board, it was called Gender Queer, and I showed a picture. It was a depiction of a minor receiving oral sex. As far as I know, that book is still available in the library. It was at least last year. I implored the administrators and the members of the board. I informed them that I had a list of 18 books that have this type of troublesome sexual material, which I have for you, and I'm simply asking for a review of sexual material for children that's meant to excite sexual curiosity in minors. When I ran as a candidate for the school board, the League of Women Voters held a forum, and they asked the question, "What is your position on book banning?" And it took everybody back. "What do you mean? We read about book banning in school. You mean things that happened in the 1930s in Europe?" Well, it kind of dawned on us slowly. They're using the language to say, calling it book banning, when actually, it's just regular moms and dads that are worried about, like I said...
Mr. Took, if you could wrap it up. Sorry.
Sure. Sexual material provided to children with this idea of enticing curiosity with pictures, et cetera. So, I have this list. I have a full expectation that this will be reviewed, and this will be handled. And I'll follow up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you leave that?
Sure.
Mr. Wright, can you pass that down to Dr. Davis? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is all that we have on the non-agenda-related public forum, and we have no one signed up for the agenda-related public forum this evening. So, moving on to workshop, please. Staffing and Budget Proposal.
All right. I have Mr. Nehans and Ms. Johnson to be able to provide some details to our staffing and budget work that's been going on for the last, really, two to three months comprehensively. So, this has been a very collaborative process that our executive team is engaged in with our directors and with our principals, administrative team overall, to be able to give feedback, to make sure that we can really do two things is what we're working on and targeting for this budget and the staffing plan. So, one is to make sure that we stay within our fiscal means as we're looking at some tricky times now as we expire the ESAR money, our COVID relief money expires, to make sure that we're, you know, within our means as we're moving forward. We're also in a declining enrollment situation, so we need to make sure that we're fiscally responsible in that regard. We also know that we're in a situation that we have some places that we need to make sure that we're providing more resources in supporting our students as our data shows. So, both the, you know, adjustments for declining enrollment, along with investments that we're making in particular places is the theme of our work over the last couple of months. Very proud of the work that all of our administrative team has done to be able to give feedback. We know we always have limited resources in this plan. Everybody gets something, but not everybody gets everything, and so that's kind of part of our, part of our process. So, we wanted a chance tonight for, to have a robust discussion with the board around the work that we've done. I'll have Drew and Sabrina provide just an overview of that as we're moving forward. As we would move then to our next meeting, given that the board dialogue tonight, then we would likely have some proposals that we would have at our next meeting that would need some approval. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Drew and Sabrina to get started with a supporting cast behind them. So...
Yes, thank you. So, as Dr. Davis said, this was quite the process that we went through. So, gonna take the board through how we built this, and what we do is we start with the budget, and we start with a revenue number. So, how we get to the revenue number and why the revenue number is really important is we are limited by the state with our revenue limit formula. So, 85% of our revenue for next year's budget comes from the revenue limit formula. The other 15% comes from a categorical aid, which is property tax relief, and from other funding, which is primarily federal funding. So, what we want to really look at, and some of this gets pretty small, so if you're following along on the board, we can go through this. Community can see this on the website. We'll just kind of highlight some of the important parts for the board. So, how the revenue limit gets calculated is we have a base revenue that gets calculated from last year's, and any kind of non-recurring item gets taken away. So, a hold harmless gets taken away. So, we started off a million and a half on our base, less than what we had last year. So, we start a million and a half lower, and this year, we're gonna, we're conservatively thinking we're gonna get $250 increased on our per pupil aid, and this is a number that's largely been zero in the past. So, we're, this is, this is a very good thing for the districts. So, with that $250, you can see our actual revenue limit is $8,000 more, $9,000 more than last year. So, really, our operating, what we're looking at for operations is flat compared to the prior year. And again, this isn't a time where we're looking at 8% to 10% inflation, and really, we're not getting any more extra money for budgeting for revenues. So, when you add in the energy efficiencies, the one number that we have highlighted here, the voucher program, that number is going to increase. It probably will not decrease. That number is going to increase. Again, this is funding for kids that go to private schools on a voucher. The district taxes for that. We don't see anything from it. So, we add that. That number will change before we truly set the budget. So, our total revenue limit is 111 million, which is 850,000 less than last year.
Excuse me, could we just go back to that voucher number for a moment?
Yep.
Just to clarify, so the $5 million plus that you show for private school voucher to aid deduction, the district collects that money in taxes from all taxpayers in the school district and then turns all of that money over to the private schools who run the voucher programs. Is that somewhat accurate?
Correct. So, the way the vouchers are funded is on the, after the 3rd Friday in September, we have, every district has to do an enrollment count then. So, and on October 15th, when the state actually sets our property values and these limits, they give us, they hardwire in what that number is going to be based on the enrollment numbers they got from the 3rd Friday count. Public schools are... Public schools are not allowed to know who the kids are. We get an actual number of kids at the K8 level and the high school level because there's two different funding amounts. So then we tax for it and then the public school or the private schools, the voucher schools, get that money off of our aid reimbursement in June. Regardless of whether the student finishes the year with them or not. So as soon as the third Friday count's done, they get the money regardless of whether that student leaves the next day or at any point in the year. We still charge for it, tax for it, and we still give it to the private schools for it.
So if a family chooses the voucher program, which they certainly can do, and they apply for that under the current revenue or income, let's call it income level for the parent, do they have to reapply every year to be part of that voucher program from a family income level?
No. Once you're accepted, you're automatically in for the rest until your child would grade out.
So if your child registers and qualifies for the program and they live in Oshkosh, and then at some point along the way, they move to Winnicottany or Nina or even, I don't know, somewhere else in the state, does the Oshkosh taxpayer then still pay for that student?
Hopefully not. We don't get to see the addresses, so it depends on the address that the parent puts in. So what we've been asking for is to get addresses so, because kids that are on the border, families that live on the border of two different districts, the state relies on that family to say, yes, I live in the Oshkosh School District. No one gets to verify whether they live in Oshkosh or Nina if they're on that border. It's just taking the word of the parent of whatever district they submit.
Thank you. I didn't mean to get that much in the weeds, but I think that's an important part of the budget process.
Mrs. Carolyn?
I have a follow-up question on that topic. And the question is roughly, our voucher impact is about $4 million, correct?
It was 4.7 this year. We're expecting it to be about a little over five next year.
Okay. And just to clarify, that benefits roughly 570 students, I want to say. I don't have the data in front of me.
I don't have that on the top of my head.
But it is ballpark 500.
That's accurate.
Okay. Thank you.
While we're talking about it, we might as well, I'm sure as we get through this tonight, we're going to find out that that $5 million could have gone a long way in certain areas that we are going to see. I think the other part about that voucher program, and you've kind of alluded to it, there's literally no accountability for that money. Test scores, nothing has to be shown. So that's just a part of this story that as we go through tonight, that's a chunk of money that we need to.
Mrs. Solaji?
Yes. So I discovered that is not entirely accurate.
Okay.
If you go to the DPI website, where you find the school report cards for public schools, you can click on a tab that has school report cards for private schools, and it will list what percentage of the students at those schools are on the voucher program. And those students are given the option to take all of the same standardized tests that our students take. As far as you can, my assumption here is that a lot of them opt out because only one of the private schools in our community actually has results posted on that report card. But you can go pull up, there is a report card for every single one of those schools, whether or not they have results. You'll just see a lot of blank data points, with the exception of one school.
Well, I appreciate that information. I had heard that for a while, there was no accountability. So if there is some, that is.
And to be clear, it's just.
Still not great, but.
It's just for the voucher students. So it's not.
Not the whole thing.
For the students whose families are paying the tuition as a private school.
Mr. Nehans?
Okay. So the next two numbers are what makes up the 111 million that we have to work with in the operations. So our state aid has been increasing, which is good. It lowers the burden on the local taxpayers. So we're up three, almost three and a half million from last year, which is another good thing for us moving forward.
That's an interrupt, but I think this might be an appropriate time because the increases that we saw in tax bills, people equate to us like changing our levy dramatically or whatnot, when really, right, that increases were largely due to property valuation increases, right?
Largely, yes.
Largely.
Yes.
Right. So this number plays into showing that more state aid should help sell our general levy, right?
It helps, it helps in a way, but we'll get to that in a little bit, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So what we're going to be setting as a, if we were, if everything held true and all our assumptions held true today, we'd be looking at a $38 million operational local levy. Of that, 35 million gets to be used in our general fund, our regular budget. You can see what's going to comprise the tax levy then. Again, trying to take the philosophy from the board of keeping the mill rate at 941 and trying to minimize what happens as we go with more referendums for capital campaigns down the road to help minimize that impact. So the tax levy would increase in this scenario by a couple million dollars. So back to the budget part, we've got revenues of 127 million. So that's going to set where expenses are looking at going. Just as a reminder, total budget for expenses in this year is 136 million. ESAR money is going away, so we need to start bridging that gap of no more ESAR funds. We need to get down into the, over a two-year period, down into the 127, 128 million dollar range, depending on what happens in the biennium.
Went the wrong way.
So moving on to staffing, we know that a portion of our budget goes towards the compensation of our employees. So it's really a balance of the sustainability and also being sure that we're able to retract, attract, and retain the best employees to serve our students. So we, as an executive team, along with school leaders, are reviewing our formula-based staffing on an annual basis. And you can see from your materials that we're committed to the model that we've created. So what this is sharing with you are some of the guidelines that we created. Before we go over the ratios, I would like to note that we've actually been using formula-based staffing on the elementary side of the house and really brought it into secondary this year. So this screen shares with us at the elementary level that it is a ratio of 24 to 1 teacher-to-student ratio. At the secondary, it's 27 to 1. And then the special education ratios are listed here as well, 15 to 1 cross cat, 10 to 1 ID EBD. So while these are targets that we use, it doesn't say, it's not stating that those are the actual numbers in our classrooms. Some classrooms are lower, some might run a little bit higher based on student need. And then the next part of the slide shares with us that the classroom sizes will not be increasing. So 18 for K3 AGR schools, 24 non-AGR schools K3, and then 27 for fourth through 12 across the system.
So what you're saying is the numbers that we had on the top are numbers that we used this year?
Yes, in elementary, secondary for our formula-based staffing.
Okay. Thank you. And formula-based staffing goes back to the days of George Pova and John Springer. So the numbers may have been different, but there has been ratios, there have been ratios used in the past. So this is not, the concept is not new. The numbers might be slightly different.
And I think fundamentally, the importance of formula-based staffing is to make sure that we can track our student enrollment. So as student enrollment's going up, you know, we would staff accordingly. If student enrollment is going down, like in our case currently, then our staffing would go down to match that. So it allows us to be able to, a clean process to be able to track that, track our trends.
And these next four slides really show some tools that we're able to use that I'm learning from Drew about with regards to peer data. And this first one shows the FTE change versus enrollment change. So you'll see in this orange dotted line, this is the percentage difference in district enrollment versus the blue showing us the difference in our FTE. So this is really the why. We really need to close this gap, but still serving our students. These next two.
Excuse me?
Oh, please.
Just for people watching, the FTE, you're talking full-time employment, correct?
Yes, yes. Thank you so much.
Sure.
These next two slides talk about position control. The first really was all employee data. And then this next just pertains to our teacher, certified teacher data.
And again, these slides were just showing us more of an example of tools we utilize to help guide conversations and help start conversations and let the administrative team really start digging into where we're spending our money, why we're spending different amounts in different places. The scatter plot that you see here is really a comparison that digs a little bit deeper. And this is one of the tools I use to help guide the budget and where we're going. So just to pick a couple of these out, the function with co-curricular activities, this is Oshkosh compared to the nine district, 10 district pool. This is where Oshkosh sits. And then same thing down here. This is, this function is for HR, Human Resources Department. So we are, with our peers, we are dead last and with co-curricular by a significant chunk of change, dead last by per pupil spending. So these are tools that we are using to say, we need to start doing a better job at this. Our co-curriculars are feeling the pain. How can we start making an adjustment? So we're using tools like these to help guide our conversations and to help formulate how we move forward with the budgets.
I like the plot deal, but we got to get Oshkosh in different colors. I was like green, this green's just a little lighter green. Just pick out our, we need our own color that's different than the other colors. But I agree, co-curriculars have been a thing for a long period of time, but we need to move some more money.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So I agree with the color thing and to.
Yeah, we don't control that part. Sorry.
So just so I make sure I'm understanding, so I think some of the questions we've got lately is adding more administration and looking at this, we're still on the low end of administration compared to our peers, just with administrative staff. Is that right?
Correct. I mean, again, this is one data point.
Yeah.
So it's a point for conversation. It's not the end-all-be-all to make all your, base all your decisions on. But it is one. So in this graphic, everything other than this top line, Oshkosh is on the low end to outside of, the shaded box is one standard deviation, so that's where you want to fall. Within that, that's an acceptable range from average. So you can see there's some where we are falling quite a bit significantly below. So the, again, this is just an example for the board to see. The intent wasn't to really kind of go through specifics on this. It's more to just show you that we are using these tools and tools like it to inform and make our conversations and decisions.
I point that out because much of the conversation lately that I've heard is the addition of the administrative staff and adding more here and everything that we're going through. So not that this is the end-all-be-all, but it's, it's an interesting, you know, point there to see that we're still on the very low end of what we can see there, so.
This would be without our staff added, without the additions we just made, correct?
It would, correct.
So.
Right. Correct. So yes, where we were, we were low. So now, yeah.
And that, excuse me, that, that data point is not one that is unusual. There was an evaluation of the administrative staffing in this district that goes back to 1970, 1997. And the recommendation was that we were very understaffed at the administrative level. And I believe maybe fall of 97 or 98, there were one or two positions added in the central office. But historically, Oshkosh has been below state average, regional averages in terms of administrative staff. And has compensated, I think, in some ways with very high-quality administrative assistants and secretaries, but that's not really their role, even though they've done them well, just from a historical perspective. Thank you.
So our reality is that our staffing must be based on enrollment. As has been shared since 2017, 18, we are down 750 students with projections to be down about 100 to 150 each year over the next five years. So with formula-based staffing being used this year, it's used to right-size now and to ensure that we are responsible to our future enrollment shifts. The next two bullets share that this resulted in adjustments of 25.5 full-time employment or employee certified staff and five FTE non-certified staff, K12. I can share that with resignations and retirements. A lot of this have been, a lot of these have been able to be absorbed through attrition. And, you know.
Excuse me, so when you say adjustments, does that mean a decrease of 25.5 FTE certified staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I, sorry, go back to that? I know we're just jumping in here. Dr. Gunlock, you shared presentation, sorry, I don't mean to bring them in, I'm just mentioning the name, presentation, I think it was a year or two ago about the declining enrollment and the, was it 2017 UW Madison had did a study and basically kind of showed that shockingly, it really is that we're lining up right where it was expected to be. And so I think that that's, that's an important part to this. Yes, it's declining, but it's, with the science, it's not like we're losing to other districts, which is still possible, but it's right where, you know, where we thought it would be. So it's not anything alarming. And then eventually, that's going to bottom out and come back up, so.
And not only for Oshkosh, I'll also just highlight that that's a trend across Wisconsin. You know, it's really a demographic shift across Wisconsin. When you have school districts like Kimberly, who are also in declining enrollment, I think that surprises a lot of people. And so it's really a trend across the state.
Mrs. Carolyn? Just to clarify, when we talk about declining enrollment, we're saying we have lost 750 students over a six-year period? Is that the data that?
Yes.
Yes.
Since 2017.
Yes.
So I looked at that and I did the math and it was 30 students last year, 40 students the year before. Our largest gap was 100 students in one year during the pandemic, which as Dr. Gunlock just noted, that we didn't predict the pandemic, but we lost exactly a number, the number of students we predicted, which I thought was crazy. So I just wanted to put that out there because I think when people hear declining enrollment, they think, oh, my gosh, the sky is falling, we're losing all our students. But we are a big district with 9,000 students. And, you know, over a six-year period, I think that concerning what's happening in the state, we've done a really good job predicting our declining enrollment and adjusting for it. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
So the other part of the process was looking at investments we had to make back into the budget. And again, this kind of goes back to some of the data pieces we were talking about just a minute ago. These are all the KPIs that are being impacted by the investments that we will cover in the next couple of slides, that we were very intentional as an administrative team of really going through and saying, where do we, what do we need to address our KPIs? Where do we need to increase our resources to be able to hit the KPIs and move the needle on the KPIs that we have? So we really looked at these different KPIs and then really made the investments back into the budget moving forward to make sure that we are addressing this side of the budget as well. So we're not just making adjustments on one side, we're making adjustments on both. It's the investments and the adjustment side.
If I could just make a comment there, please. For the board self-evaluation using the perceptions data, this is one of the points that we're asked to evaluate ourselves on as a school board. Are we putting resources where we have improvement plans and the need to put resources where they are most needed? So this ties directly to that item on that self-evaluation.
So the next few slides. So the next few slides list the investments to support the KPIs. The first one listed here are the 21 teacher associates. These are currently temporary positions that were created right around the time of COVID and supported through ESSR funds. So our recommendation is that these transition from temporary positions to permanent. And in doing so, it really helps with the substitute shortage that we're experiencing. So that's kind of the why behind that request. The next is the five dean of students. Currently, four of these are temporary positions as well that we're recommending going to permanent. And then there's the add at Reed School due to student need. And the last bullet here, I won't read through each of them, but this one lists the 2.5 literacy coaches to support early literacy within the schools listed, and these are new adds.
Can I ask a question? Can you go back to that slide?
Whoop. Sorry. Thought I went.
So when you talk about the 21 teacher associates that are being transitioned or potentially being transitioned into full-time regular positions, is that already like being considered within the budget? Okay, good.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm, this is all new to me.
Yep.
Great question. That's good.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question. And then, and you can see underneath these proposals, so the board had approved, on March 29th, approved the teacher associates. So those have been approved. As you look at like the five deans of students and the 2.5 literacy coaches, that's something that we're discussing tonight as a workshop, and then we would bring to the board for approval of those positions on May 10th, as we would go. So, yeah.
Perfect.
No, good question.
And those 21 teacher associates, I think as we all went out to see our schools, there were so much, so many positive comments about how essential they have become and the consistency that they offer from building to building.
Can you go back as well? I have a question. Dr. Davis, I'd sent this to you when I saw this, and I guess maybe to follow up with, are we losing any of the current dean of students?
No.
So these are five more dean of students in addition to what we currently have?
Not more. So some, some of them are temporary, currently temporary positions.
Okay.
And the position that we have at, so Reed Elementary, obviously Vell Phillips, you know, is, is different, but Reed Elementary would be something in addition to what we have right now. So, but they're designated as temporary. The trickiness now is as we're transitioning from our ESSR money moving forward, we deliberately made sure that any positions that we'd add with ESSR money, that they were tagged as temporary positions, knowing that we would have to work them into permanent positions and get approval from the board as they would move into that because they'd be part of the structural budget. So that's, that's the process that we're in right now.
So no one's, we're not losing any dean of students in any of our buildings?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah.
That's, that's, that's good. That's important. I think as we also said, as Beth had mentioned, that, you know, seeing the support in those two, the teacher associates and the dean of students kind of go together, right? The support that they offer within the buildings.
Yeah, and those deans have been doing a, doing a great job. And again, this was a collaborative effort with our, with all of our administrative team, which includes our principals. And so this was something that they had prioritized and that we were able to work into this proposal.
And my next question is the last item there. Are we, I say only because I'm just trying to make sure I understand it correctly, are we only adding 2.5 literacy coaches?
So we're, we're adding 2.5 literacy coaches, yes.
Okay.
So.
Any other?
So, and I can have Dr. Brown maybe talk about just the, the assessment of how we, you know, got to that point.
Yeah, I guess, I see that number and I assume, based on what we've put in policy, that that number may have been higher. So I just want to make sure that that's.
So, yeah, so what we've, you know, we've been working, as you know, very hard on our, especially related to our early literacy, monitoring our scores. We've got a good monitoring process right now on a monthly basis. So between monitoring our data and getting out into buildings and being able to hear, you know, how things are going, how the teams are doing, where the support's needed, is the 2.5 positions that came out as, as the priorities to be able to, to put them in places that, that the scores indicated and that as, as teams had expressed, you know, where they're short to be able to strengthen that. So Dr. Brown was working specifically with that, so I can never talk.
So we currently have 23 elementary literacy coaches interventionists from peak 4K through fifth grade. So the 2.5, as Dr. Davis said, is going to wrap around our schools that data has shown that we need to help lift. They also happen to be the three schools, when you look at the staffing, that 24 to one, they are almost always at 24 to one. So it's, it's, they have more students and more of a need, and we just really need to wrap around those three schools in order to really lift in that area, so.
Was there, just to make sure, because when I, a couple of meetings back when we did the DEI position, the conversation was that we can do both, that this, so when it came to deciding that 2.5, did it have anything to do with budget or did it simply come down to this is what we need to do the job?
Yeah, my conversation with Dr. Brown is what do we need to do to do the job? Do we have a clear policy, you know, a set, you know, from what we're hearing in the field? Now, of course, would everybody, would everybody like, you know, another? Yes. But as, as we're doing an assessment across the system and knowing that literacy, you know, literacy, math, and SCL are our priorities, literacy is, is the one thing we, we have to make sure we make progress on, that, that was one of the first things that we talked about. So 2.5 is where that came out. It wasn't, wasn't negotiated from, you know, seven down to 2.5.
It wasn't a, a budget conversation? It was this is what we need to do this?
Correct.
And this is what you will be held to, I mean, because being in policy, right?
Yes.
It's got to be enough to make sure that that number, that we hit that number.
Yes, that's why I approached it with that, with, in that process. Right? To make sure we know it's that important as we move forward. And I feel good because we have our monitoring processes now in place. So as we continue to become more mature as a system and use those monitoring processes, we're going to know, you know, pretty quickly as we get to next year's staffing process, if we need to secure up, you know, resources. And sometimes it might be shifting, you know, it might, might be adding, you know, we'll see. But now, I would, for me, I think this was probably one of the most informed decisions based on our data that we've been able to do. It's not just, you know, listening to, you know, what we need, but it's really using data in our monthly common formative assessments that we're doing on student skills to be able to put resources in places that we know that we need to do. So we'll continue to go deeper, but yeah, that, that's a good, I appreciate the question.
Thank you.
Okay. You want to go to the next page?
So just pulling one from this PowerPoint screen is the staff market adjustments. These pertain to the adjustments that are approved through negotiations. The next slide.
Now, can we go back to that also? So the other thing that we had in that was some reclassification of positions at the central office. So as we're looking at market adjustments that we would have in all of our offices, in central office, we want to make sure again that we stay competitive. So when we're looking at a, an 8% inflation, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, we're never likely going to match kind of private sector, but we got to make sure that we're making some progress. So, so through Sabrina's expertise and the hard work that her and her office has done is really looking at both competitive, competitive market salaries and then also job titles and reclassification. So that's part of, that's built in to this proposal also that, that you'll see. So I just, I didn't want to gloss over that. That's an important point for us to, to, as we're moving forward.
Can I ask a, sorry, I'm talking a lot. Co-curricular budget increase to provide more equitable resources for student activities. Can you maybe speak to exactly what that means?
Yeah, the co-curricular budgets have, have really not been part of the actual budget for a significant amount of time. So I worked with the, the two AEDs and, and they worked with the non-athletic co-curricular advisors as well. So we're hitting all, all of co-curriculars. And what they came up with as a proposal to me was to make them whole on an annual basis. They need $250,000 collectively. So right now, we've been able to fit in $250,000 for them with the intent, as I've talked with them, of this is gonna, this is gonna set the new baseline for them and with the expectation, hopefully in, in the next year or two, to start reducing the number of fundraisers that are needed and asked of for the students that participate in co-curriculars to fund just normal parts of what their activity is, that we can start shifting away from all the fundraising and we can really, the district can pay for the basics. And then we utilize the booster clubs and, and those kind of community partners to help with any, any extras.
As a parent in the district, thank you. There's enough fundraisers. We can use them in other ways, as you mentioned. So equitable, I also see that as making sure the female and male basketball teams have equal resources, right? Making sure that, we're making sure that, that, that is taken care of. Is that part of that, that sentence with equitable resources?
Yeah, the, the way the, the data was presented to me from the two AEDs is they went and truly did a zero-based budgeting with their coaches and told them, what do you need on an annual basis? They did an annual, they did a three-year and a five-year needs assessment. So they presented all of those. At this time, I said the, the district would, would present and be willing to commit to the one year. I've still got some work to do on how we can fit the three-year, additional three-year needs and five-year need replacements into the budget. At this time, I, we can't commit to that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we have to bring it down $10 million over the next few years, right?
Yep.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Quick clarification. So Mr. Carnes, when he read that, he pointed out the girls and boys' basketball team. But equity is not equality. And so when I read this, I think about making our students that, of modest needs, making our activities affordable for students that may not, not have extras. So is that correct also?
Yeah, and that's part of where, where I've had the conversations with limiting fundraising, not making that part of the expectation. Not every student that participates in these have parents that have a work environment or a neighborhood environment where they can easily go, go sell the 20 tickets or the 40 tickets or just say, I'm just going to pay for them and you don't have to do this. So really trying to get out of that fundraising and having kids feel obligated that that's part of what they're doing within that activity to make it where it, it's really now a, I want to participate because I, I want to either learn the activity or I really enjoy it already and make as little barriers as we can to provide, again, provide whatever the basics would be for that activity that we're, that we're funding it at that level.
Any other questions on this page? Okay.
So again, just pulling a couple off of this sheet, the Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and then also the Director of Technology. And Dr. Davis shared with regards to the central office market evaluation.
Can you, is it okay that we just keep asking questions?
Yes, it's a workshop. That's the idea.
I know, like to the end and then it's like, this is right. So I've, I've heard questions about adding another communications position. It's something that Ms. Wyman has been very much adamant's the right word, but very, and wanting to, to use that to showcase our district and tell our own story. So I guess I've heard questions regarding adding another, another position within the administration building. Do you want to talk to what that position is going to be looked at, how we're going to utilize that to help the district?
Yeah, so, so that's, that's specifically going to be a kind of boots on the ground in schools, again, to be able to, to help lift up student and staff stories. So the ability for us to do regular highlights, I know one district that I'm familiar with does equity in action kind of features. So where there's equity work that's going on throughout the district to be able to go in and do, you know, either a quick news story or do a quick video, just to be able to lift that up. We know that our staff are working very, very hard at the work that we're doing and, and we need to be able to make sure that we're telling our stories, especially in the, in the competitive environment that we're in. So, so that's, that would be one example. I think another example would be doing some podcasts to be able to get on a regular rhythm for podcasts. That would be, again, you know, probably myself going out to be able to support, telling our stories, similar to what I've done on videos, but a much higher volume. And so we need that support, again, boots on the ground to be able to lift those stories up. So that's, there'll be a really tangible project, product that you'll be able to see that, once we get that, that position in motion. And that's a, it's a good compliment right now and Katie Neiman's doing a great job for us. And, but as we look at, at Katie for crisis, you know, crisis response, strategic planning and strategic communications that are important and especially in the volume that we need to be able to produce for referendum projects and all of those types of things, you know, Katie only has so much bandwidth. She's a superhero, but she only has so much bandwidth. So, so in that regard, we want to make sure that we can get some extra support that's really going to be the day-to-day stories, which are what we just can't capture as well now. We're doing the best we can, but this position will be, you know, something that we'll be able to really set some clear goals for and be able to, to produce and, and produce in a very public way.
Two things. On the communication position, if you're not telling your story and you're not getting out what's actually happening within your district, someone else will. I mean, I hear all kinds of wild things sometimes, you know, that are totally based on anything, you know? So I think like communicating to the public is a very important thing because people need to be comfortable, you know, with what we're doing. Like I think the thing that like irritates me the most or a lot is like when people talk about like, like us not doing a good job here in OASD. You know what I mean? Because it's going into schools all the time. That's just totally not true. You know what I mean? You've been going to school and all the kids are happy. The teachers are doing a great job. Everything's going really well, right? And that can be happening across the system and there'll be some social media platform up somewhere saying like, you know, just bashing, you know, the system that's totally unfounded. So communication is a necessity in today's world with Twitter and, I don't know, my kids are on TikTok and Lord knows what other apps there are. Right? And then extracurricular, I like the work that we're doing there and I like, like the messaging even. Because I've had some of the club, the club programs are vital to getting kids involved in those types of activities and they're offering scholarships now. You know, like I want to see every kid in this district that wants to have the opportunity to participate in those types of activities to be able to participate in them. You know, like on the West Side, we shouldn't have our varsity teams predominantly made up of Oakwood-Trager kids all the time. You know, it's important we, it's important we grow these types of things because all the research and data says that extracurriculars, co-curriculars, they help grow kids, you know, like they help grow them into good, responsible human beings, which is what we want. So I'm glad we're paying attention to that and I guess if I stop talking, we will be here till midnight.
Can I add off of that? So, I don't know about that. None of this has been quick. I think that's a point that I didn't think about, but something as well that if, talk about equitable resources for, for the co-curriculars, I think we lead by example, right? And, and if there are clubs and other things, we showcase the right way to do it and we bring them along with, let's hope for that. Secondly, the social worker at Ashkosh North High School scored pilot of a suspension deferral program. Is that something similar to the Phoenix Rise program that's being done?
Yeah, exactly.
And if so, before you go into it, having been at Merrill and met with Principal Levy a couple of months ago, very, very impressed by her and that entire program. So if that's where that's going, then that is great news.
Yeah, that's exactly where, where that's going. So we've had a successful pilot, as you had said, over at, at Merrill and Webster, the combination. We'll continue that, that program at Vell Phillips. But we want to, again, be able to begin to provide continuity within the system. So when we have those types of supports, that, that we can, you know, take small steps to move forward. But that's made a significant difference for kids and we would expect the same at Northeast.
I mean, I think she said something of tens of thousands of.
Minutes captured.
Minutes of brought back into the, yeah, for instruction. And that's, that's, that's areas that we can highlight and tell our story, right? So.
That's a classic example, right? Of us being able to see equity in action, if you will.
I'll stop talking.
Dr. Herzic?
Thank you. I wanted to speak briefly to the Communication and Marketing Specialist. The last three years since the COVID cloud descended on us has been tough on parents, on students, and on, on staff. on students and on, on staff. And as Mr. Wright alluded to, sometimes there are stories out there that are backed, based on fiction, not fact. And this provides us with an opportunity to provide our community with accurate information on what's going on in our schools. Do we have areas of improve, that we need to improve? Obviously we do. We have the K P I's, the 19 or 20 key performance indicators, but it's important that we also highlight what's positive in our district. And not only do our students and families need to hear that, but our teachers need to hear that as well. And if we're going to grow this district, one way you do that is by marketing and you do that by telling your story and what's going on. We've talked around these tables over a period of years about wanting this to be a destination district. We have to give reasons for why people want to come here and there are lots of them. And we need to do a better job of communicating those out. I believe roughly 75% of the people in most communities do not have children in school and they, that's also an audience we need to touch because children are the future and they're going to be the recipients of, you know, a student waiting on them in a restaurant or in a healthcare facility, repairing their vehicles. So we need to do a better job of getting out those stories as to how all of us are going to benefit by making our students' college career and community ready. And that's all part of it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
The only thing I wanted to say is I'm very impressed with the thoroughness of this budget and the relevance of it, how it all relates back to what we're trying to do with the strategic plan and all of the K P I's and the things that we've put into policy that relate back to literacy and really the success of our students. And it's nice to see a budget that is really inclusive of all of those items.
Thank you.
So that does bring us back to the, back to the budget and, and where the budget sits today. And again, this is, this is going to change between now and, and when we set the budget in early September and when we set the tax levy in October.
And so if we could just pause, so, so as Kelly's going through this for the first time, so again, this is, this is typical, and it's, it's typical for school districts, the way that we're funded, but it's atypical of everybody else in the universe of how they, where they do, do work. So, so we, because of our need to be able to be prepared for next school year, we need to be able to do our, but our, our budget on forecasting. The state budget likely won't be approved until probably August or September and the state budget is where we get our funding from. So we're going off of our best information that we have built on our relationships with our representatives to give a best guess, if you will, based on our numbers. As Drew had said, these, this budget will adjust, so there's nothing that's in stone here, but we are doing our staffing and we do that in a very conservative mode, knowing that, you know, we need to, to be as accurate as possible. But it will be, we get some reports from the state, an update in July, we'll get an update in August and then September, just as the different parts of the budget become available. And so what you'll see coming back over the summer and in the fall is Drew coming back with another piece that's confirmed from the state level. So these are all pieces, again, our, our best estimates, if you will, educated guesses. But each piece will come in and they, unfortunately, they don't come in all at once either, they come in one at a time. So, so it'll crystallize as we move forward and then we have an annual process then that we do in the fall to be able to just totally solidify our budget. Ironically, that's the point where we're already a month and a half into school, running a bu, running a budget that, you know, is a little bit, little bit late. So just to give you some context.
Thank you.
Yeah, where we are.
Thank you. So again, the revenue number we, we had gone over before, so very high level expenditures. One thing I do want to point out, and I apologize, I'm, I missed this in the staff reports, the net effect of our adjustments and our investments is a budget decrease of 4.3 million. Again, trying to work, work our way down from, in the number we're really using, instead of using last, this current year's budgeted number for expenses, we're using what we're anticipating and projecting as our actual ending expenditure for this school year as our base number and then going from there. So using our projected number from, from a couple of weeks ago, going out to the, where we're projecting expenditures to land and going through our, our adjustments and our investments, we had a net decrease of 4.3 million. So again, I, I think we've made a really good progress and, and we're in a good situation right now. The budget is, is not balanced at this point, but we've got a lot of moving parts that are still going to happen through the process Dr. Davis was just explaining. So at this point, there, I, I wouldn't, I feel pretty comfortable with where we're sitting right now. Are there any other questions? There is a lot to consume.
Yeah, I do have a question. So the historical data, I really like that we have historical, current and budget. Am I understanding correctly that, that the historical is just the year of 2021, 22 school year? It's not like five years collectively together, right?
No, they're all one year.
Yeah.
The historical is actual audited numbers.
Okay.
So those are not what we budgeted at that time. Those are actual numbers. The blue column, the current year, that's, that's our budget.
That's what we're running, but it hasn't been yet.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, and then we use our, the actual budget year and then you can see how we, the system kind of calculates where you're sitting comparatively. And, and again, at this point, there's still projections.
Yeah. Thank you.
When I, when I read from this budget, it's that we're in very good financial shape for balance, you know, fund balance. We're receiving less revenues, 4.3 million, right? But yet we're still supporting our staff and teachers by giving good pay increases so that we can be a competitive district, right? Those to me, I think are, you know, are things that community needs to understand as a whole, right? Less, bring in less money, 4.3 million less. We're still finding ways to support teachers the way that we should, the best that we possibly can and have fund balance of 22 million. That's being, in my opinion, that's being good stewards of taxpayer money. And one other question is I think one of the biggest decisions we have made, and perhaps the plan to this, of self-funding our health insurance. Like where would we be at if we wouldn't have done that? My thought process is we wouldn't be able to do any of these things if we wouldn't have made that big decision back then, right?
Yeah, we'd, we'd be in a, we'd be in a different place, having a, having a different conversation. If, had we, had our fully funded plan done increases based on trend, in this budget year, we'd be looking at a $32 million spend on, on our health plan, where right now we're looking at about 26.5 million.
That's saving.
Is, is what we are budgeting right now.
By self-funding yourself, health insurance, then what we're saving six, seven million annually, roughly?
Yeah, and it'll, it'll increase because right now the, the trend, the trend for this year is somewhere close to 18% increases in that plan. They, they typically don't go below seven. So you're increasing at that rate where our plan right now is we're, we're making reductions within the plan and, and how we're funding it because it's, it's been running well.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
That was a big call that has paid, allowed us to move the district forward in a positive way, in my opinion, so.
Anybody else? Any? Yes.
I just had a question. I get a question from our legislators quite often as to how can Oshkosh afford to build all these new schools and where are we getting the money for some of our programs and are we mismanaging our funds because we got all this money from ESTER and the government and why do we still need more money? And I, I know the answer to this question, but I think you can answer it better than I can regarding our referendum process and our budgeting process, et cetera.
Sure, you got a lot going on.
I know, it's a lot going on. But that's a question I get from our legislators all the time, like how can you guys afford to build schools? I'm like, well, we went to referendum, it's part of our long-term facilities plan, we're actually rightsizing, we're going to save money in the long run, et cetera, et cetera. But I, I'm asking it because I want that perception to go away.
Sure. So the, the capital campaigns, the, the buildings, the new buildings we have are referendum funded, so taxpayers approve them. They went out. One of the things you'll hear in a little while is we, we've really worked really hard on that front to really make sure that we're managing and scheduling our, our finances within the debt side for the capital, for the bonding, for the capital programs, to make sure that we have better capacity and better ease for the taxpayers when, when more projects have to get done. The, the, the district as a whole is, has neglected building, buildings and doing renovations for a significant amount of time, so there's a lot of needs now. So, so that's how that all comes from that, the referendum side and, and community votes for that. The budgets themselves, we get audited every year and our audit has always come back clean. So mismanaging funds and how we're doing that, that's not happening in here. So in the audit process, not only do we have an independent auditor who does that, D P I has auditors and D P I as well that go over the audit. So we've got two sets of auditors that are looking at our books every single year. Obviously, we are not mismanaging our, our money or our funds and I, I think as you can see, even just from this graphic, 21, 22 would have been the first real year of any kind of substantial ESTER money and we have utilized that. And now we are on our track to bringing it back down to prepare for 24, 25, when ESTER money, the revenues from that are no longer around. As far as the budget goes, it would be really nice if the state would actually give us some inflationary increases that they've neglected to do for a substantial amount of time.
And my apologies, I did not mean to put you on the spot.
Nope.
Like that, it's just one of those common questions that people always ask us and...
Yeah. But I, I think the real value also in thinking about our 10-year facilities plan, like that's a really key component to that, to that question because as we've, as Drew had mentioned, you know, we have neglected building buildings and, and keeping up buildings as we should for a long time. That's put us in this compression mode right now with where we are, you know, within our 10-year plan. Our goal is to be able to, as we move through our 10-year plan, we'll always add another year on. So our goal is that when we get, you know, five years from now, when we have a 10-year plan that is the tail end of our current plan and five more years, our goal is to make sure that, that Drew and I, and somebody else will manage like long into the future. But as Drew and I would leave a, a, a long-term facilities plan, that there's a regular rhythm and a cadence within the debt structure that we can do renovations and that we never get this district back into the building compression that it's currently in. Because that's, that's really what the setup is. So we have a strategy to do that. We just need to be able to get over the hump now in our current situation and it allows us to refresh our buildings, allows us to consolidate, to be more efficient. And long-term, it's going to allow us to be on a cadence that we can get to that, that is going to be sustainable for, for taxpayers, so.
Did you have something?
No. No, I did not. I guess I've been taking notes and patiently waiting. I have a question. Do we know if that four to five million dollars that goes to the private schools, those voucher funds, do they get audited? Do we know if there's a process for that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not positive on that.
That just kind of for me went back to Mr. Carnes' question earlier about the accountability and I know there isn't testing, but I thought, oh, maybe there's not in auditing, but I don't know, there might be. That's why I asked.
And, and to build on that, would, my question would be, is that publicly available?
Yes.
So is the audit publicly available on that?
Like our, our responsibility to the taxpayer
Right.
Money is that we go through this process.
Right.
And so that just made me curious, what happens to that money that's kind of funneled through us to private entities?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how they would because they don't, is, and we've asked, as, as business managers, we've asked, there's never anything that gets made public on the address of people taking the voucher.
Yeah.
So if you're auditing it, but you're never auditing the address to verify what district should be paying, I don't know how you're auditing.
Yeah. Thank you. The other thing that has been on my mind and actually, Mr. Neon, you stated it there at the end of your answer to Ms. Carlin's question was that the state has neglected to give increases. Going back to one of the earlier slides where we saw that, you know, we're at this current year, 136.8 million, but our projected is 127.5 million because the ESTER funds are going away. And I just keep thinking about how the ESTER funds were given, correct me if I'm wrong in this summary, were given from the federal government to the states to try and support the fallout of COVID. And here in our state, the state decided that since we got federal funding, there was no need to do increasing that year. So to make up the difference, even if the state gave a $9 million increase, which would make the difference, we'd be behind where we were pre-COVID because, and that's a huge increase. Like if the state's going to make up a $900 million increase, that to a lot of people might sound like a lot and we're getting a lot of state support, but we'll actually end up behind where we were before COVID. Is that a correct assessment of the situation?
Yes.
Yeah.
They, they, they are...
I've been like, I've been sitting on that.
Trying to say.
Yes, and, and I think the slide early in the presentation when we looked at the $250 per pupil increase and with that included, we were like $9,000 over the base from last year. That's with a $250 increase, we, we see a $9,000 actual budget increase. And, and this will be the third time in something like eight years, nine years, that we've gotten an increase, if we get one in this biennium.
Yeah.
We have not gotten, we've, since, since Act 10, we've pretty much been, for the most part, completely isolated and frozen.
Six out of the last eight years have been a, a $0 per pupil increase.
Yeah. So to Mr. Wright's point about, you know, and I appreciated your enthusiasm and your optimism because I'm sitting here seeing this and I'm like, oh my gosh. But when you said this is so good and we're handling this all so well and managing this all so well, I agree with that and I really did appreciate that you kind of buoyed me up. I just think it's important to point out that we're doing so well in the face of difficult odds, very difficult odds.
Not to interrupt, but one other fact, I guess, and I suppose Wisconsin could change a spot or raise a spot or lower a spot, but was, the state of Wisconsin's funded public education at the third lowest level in the country over the last 20 years. And that's just, that's just is where it is. So we're, we're budgeting like this that well and, you know, I mean, people can look it up, whatever, do, study on it, that's, that's where we're at with the support we're getting, you know, within this, within the state. And that can be a political whatever thing, but I mean, you can't change the numbers. So, yeah.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any final questions?
I do.
Mr. Carnes?
And, and we're a state built on education, so just to follow up with that, it's kind of not the way we want to be. So we see all the areas where we're increasing our funding and putting the money into the logical area where we saw at the beginning of where we're taking away is those staff adjustments, right? The 25.5 F T Es that are dropping. Is there any other areas where we are shifting our funding away from?
The health plan is one. I mean, that's a significant, again, we're, we're looking at about a $2 million reduction.
That's a good shifting away, right? That's, that's, that's good decisions. Was there any other areas where we've decided to put more, less money in there and more money over here? That we can...
Not, not off the top of my head, there would be significant.
Okay.
Again, I, I think as we went through the staffing exercise and then as we go through and, and get a little bit more comfortable with this new, because it is a somewhat newer process that, that we really went through and, and really getting much more involvement and, and really looking at additions and investments as well as the adjustments. I, I think those will, other adjustments as we go through them will, will be a little bit more to come. This is just where we are right now.
So one of the first slides we saw was the teacher, student ratios, classroom sizes. I think there was some concern that classroom sizes are going up. That has clearly been stated, classroom sizes are not going up.
Right, the guidelines have not changed.
The 18, 24, 27, 27 that we saw.
Correct.
We don't exceed those numbers. Those are the highest as they will go. Those are the highest as they will go.
Correct, those are the historical targets. Now, again, you have a little bit of flex in there. It's not like, you know, as soon as we'd get to 28, we'd automatically have another section. But those are the targets, and that's what our staffing plan has been, has been around.
And we're not going to see a significant jump in those numbers in any of the schools? I mean, is it fair to say, I mean, we're going to see a little shifting variation from school to school, but nothing that's going to be...
Correct, not anything that we haven't done historically.
Okay, so I think, do you want to add to that? Because I have more to go.
Well, yeah, I would point out that it's not that class sizes won't go up, the ratios aren't changing. So the class sizes may go up, the actual students in the seats, but the ratio, the cap is not changing.
So that was two different parts of that same slide. You had the ratios.
Yeah.
Which includes all the coaches and other positions, right?
Can you go back to that slide? Would you?
It was number five.
Come on the other one up.
Oh, sorry. Just to make sure we have clarity on that.
Which one are you...
That one.
So I was referring to the bottom section with the classroom sizes, actually, that those are not going to be going up.
Correct, yeah, so those are the historical classroom guidelines that we've used to be able to set class sizes. So as we look, as our principals get together and they're looking at number of sections for the building, those are the guidelines that we're using. Now, again, you know, some run, what we call a little hotter, so they'd be closer to the guidelines, some are a little cooler. So right now, we have to make decisions because of our budget, you know, situation, you know, at this time of year for next year. So those are the guidelines that we use. That has not changed from what we've done historically.
And the staffing ratio also stays, that's what we currently do and that's what we're shooting for in the, as we go forward.
Right.
So those numbers, okay. That's an important part to the story because I think as we see us adding more administrative staff, as we see teachers leaving and our numbers going down, that I hear stories that all the classroom sizes are going up, we're letting teachers go, and I just think it's a fair statement to, to clarify some of that, that that's not the story.
Correct, yeah. Staffing is following the students.
Okay. And then, for some of you have seen, that's a big topic for me. We've talked about that a number of times at the Education Committee, talking about classroom sizes, so I want to continue to, to drive that in, that, that's an area that, for myself, that I'm very passionate about. So I would love to see it go down, but I definitely don't want to see it go up. And so, so thank you. I think that's all I had.
Okay. Any good wrapping up? Okay. Thank you very much for all of your preparation, and thank you, Board, for all of your preparation with some very good questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We are now at the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the Board's been furnished with background material on each item or is discussed at a previous meeting. This will be actuated by one vote without discussion. Please, reminder that number 11 has been pulled to an individual considered resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Hershey.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Salagi.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Doitt.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Okay. Let's look at number 11, English for Speakers of Other Languages Program Plan. Dr. Herzog, do you have a question on this?
I do, but in order to do that, we'll need a motion and a second, so I will...
Oh, sorry, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
I will, I will wait until it's moved and settled.
What was the motion?
Just to discuss it.
Number 11, right? Call the roll, please.
Oh, no, now we can, but we can discuss this now because I have a question about the way the, of the wording. I'm just trying to find the page here, I'm sorry. Okay, so I'm trying to sort this out a little bit. We had a wonderful presentation at our last board meeting on the ESOL plan. I think it was labeled program at that, in that staff report. But we didn't receive this document at that time that's labeled English for Speakers of Other Languages Program Policy Handbook. So I'm just trying to look for consistency in the language here. I know in this staff report for today, under 4B, major points in this report, the updated ESOL program plan is attached to the staff report. I'm wondering if this title for the, the handbook should include the word "plan" in it, so it might read Program Plan Policy Handbook. I don't necessarily equate a handbook and a plan because like we have staff handbooks and that's not necessarily a plan. So I'm just looking for some consistency of language. If our requirement is to approve a program plan, then I'm wondering if the word "plan" should appear somewhere in the title.
I think that's a really good observation. So Julie and I talked about that, and I think that'll add to the consistency, to add "plan" to the, to the actual document because that's where it should be as we would work forward because it's, it's a plan, not in a handbook like in a traditional way that you would look at that. So, and that's how we also have it posted online, you know, for, for our resources. So we'd want to be consistent as we would move forward. So, so, so we, we could approve the plan with an amendment of changing the cover page or be able to look at, at that, we can make that change.
I think it's just minor, but if the requirement is that we approve a program plan, then it would seem to be that the word, words "program" and "plan" should be in whatever we're approving.
Yeah.
So if it takes an amendment, I will move to amend the, the title if that's agreeable. Or, or if you want to offer an amendment, that's great, but I think we need, need some consistency.
Go, go ahead.
If, I identified two places where the, the title needed to be corrected, so if, I mean, if it's okay with this is the program plan and we can, on page one of it, we can swap out "policy handbook" and, and change that to "plan." And that would be the one, that would be the one place because on pages two and on pages three, it does say "program plan" and all the, the individuals that worked on that particular plan. So that's really where it needs to be swapped out, and we can, we can do that if you're comfortable with that, right after this is approved off the draft.
So this is what we're referring to?
Correct. So if we, if we swap out "policy handbook" and replace it with "plan," that would be the major spot to do that.
Okay, so I will...
And we can do that.
I will move that we change the title as proposed by Ms. Conrad to English for Speakers of Other Languages Program Plan.
Mm-hmm.
Or, I'll leave it at that.
A second.
Okay. Carnes?
Aye.
Salagi?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Doitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next one is...
So we, then we'd need to approve, so that was the amendment.
Oh, gosh, sorry.
I know, it gets confusing.
It's a practice.
Yep.
Okay. So now we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We don't need that because we are...
We did it when we did the discussion. Yes, correct.
So if you just give me one second to catch the issues. Okay, so we are now approving. So we've got Salagi.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Doitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you all.
Keep us in line, Eileen, this is good.
Thanks, Ms. Conrad.
Okay, we now have resolution number 12, authorizing redemption certain of the general promissory note, series 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Drew?
Drew's here for resources as, as, questions as, as needed.
You want to just give us a brief rundown, maybe?
Sure. We, we are, we had, as part of the mole rate management that, that the Board does, we levied the additional 9.5 and change million into the Fund 39 levy to redeem bonds early. The Board needs to act on a resolution. So by doing the redemption, what the district is saving is we're saving $939,000 of interest with $125,000 of that this year on the interest rate. So we're also going to gain $1.37 million of additional state aid because of these additional expenditures. And just as a, as an update for the Board, and this isn't in the report, but as an update, from the beginning of the referendum that we, the 107 million referendum we had in November, from the pre-planning of that until today, the district saved $42 million of interest by financing the way we've done it and by paying off debt with interest rates early as we've been able to. So this is, the, the program we've been on has saved a significant amount of money for the taxpayers in a very short amount of time.
$42 million.
Correct, just, just over 42 millions is the current total.
I don't think we can say that number enough.
From all that, you know, stuff we refinanced and approved for the Board.
And that's something that, I'm sorry, should go out to the community. That is, that's great news for every taxpayer.
Excuse me, it's telling our story, right?
Telling our story.
You need to tell us.
Do we have a motion on this?
Yes, because we have discussion.
Okay, good.
Well, thank you, Drew, for...
Well done.
...that update. It's great to hear. Tonight was definitely your night for questions.
Yeah.
So we appreciate it, or I appreciate it. Thank you.
Call the roll? Ray?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Doitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Okay, nice, we'll sit right there.
Yep.
Number 13, approval of amended budget. So a motion?
I move.
Second.
Was it Salagi?
That was Herzog and my...
And Carnes.
Carnes, thank you.
Discussion.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Again, forgive me, this is all new to me. Is it, is it pretty common to amend or approve an amended agenda like so close to the end of the fiscal year?
Yes, yes and no. The reason we're amending it this year is, is there is a significant, significant change. We typically have small changes that, that would happen, again, just because of the timing of, we, we set our budget in September, the tax levy truly gets set and some of the other state, the state mandated kind of numbers don't get set until October. So there's usually some change that happens, not typically this large. The primary reason for this is we, we allocated more ESTER funds. One of the things we were hearing after we approved the, the budget in September, we were getting significant feedback from, from Madison that around the ESTER money and districts that still had it, like, like we got a significant amount in the, in the third allocation. We're holding on to the funds partly to help with the cliff that we just, we just went over in the presentation that's coming up. So we were getting feedback at that point of, well, if they're just going to hold the money, maybe the biennium, we won't give anything in either year because you're hoarding your ESTER money and not really using it. So as we were evaluating and hearing that, we decided to really utilize significantly more of the ESTER money in this year. So that's most of the adjustments being made. The feedback to your question on, on the timing, DPI prefers that that amendment happen a little bit later. There's no real set in stone date you're supposed to do an amendment. They just want it by mid-May-ish because really what they're using your, your amended budget for is your state aid calculation, which again, doesn't get truly set until October, but it'll give people a little bit better gauge if we have that done before the, the middle of June. So it's not really something set in stone, but this allowed us, doing this timing, allowed us to really kind of work through more of what that budget's going to be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more comments, questions?
Call the roll?
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Doitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Salagi?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Salagi?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Doitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Doitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Doitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Okay, nice, we'll sit right there.
Yep.
Number 13, approval of amended budget.